To order, this is the January 30th, 2018 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Longview. Commissioners Carpenter and Jenkins will lead us through the invocation and the pledge to our flag. Please stand.
Let us pray. Almighty God, as we come to you in the presence of this evening and give you thanks for this day, thanks for this city, thanks for each other. May we come together in the spirit of cooperation and moving forward with our city. We give you all the praise and the glory. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Do I amend the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to every government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Unless there are corrections to be made to the minutes, I will, the chair will propose or entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We do not have a consent agenda this evening, so we'll go directly to the regular agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the board. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The board also considers plats. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be, the public hearing will be opened and testimony will be heard in the following order. Number one, the applicant; number two, staff; and number three, the general public, both in support and in opposition of the request. If you're part of a large group of common interests, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson, rather than have each individual restate the same information. When addressing the board, please begin by stating your name and address, and try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the board will vote on their request. Zoning requests and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City Council on February 8, 2018. Agenda item A, I will call for Angela to read the agenda item to us, please.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application RP 18-02 Bob's Place, Unit 1 and 2, filed by Premier Management, to replat approximately 5.27 acres of Lot 1, Block 1, and Lots 1 and 2, Block 2, Bob's Place, into four commercial lots located on the south side of Hawkins Parkway, east of Z-Way, and west of 4th Street.
Thank you, Angela. Is the applicant here? If so, please come to the microphone, introduce yourself, give your address, and tell us about your project.
I'm not the applicant, but I'm representing him. Jackie Roberts with Roberts Surveying.
Yes, sir. Your address?
It's 307 East Main in Hallsville.
Thank you. Would you tell us about your project, please?
Well, it was already platted and we replatted it for the, mainly for the three lots that are on the east side of Z-Way there. The other two were already approved and one we did last year. So, Z-Way will, we, Z-Way wasn't as wide as it was supposed to be, and so we, we made it meet the city specifications. So that's why we included all of the lots instead of just the ones on the east side of Z-Way.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir. Staff?
Thank you. As the applicant stated, they are replating three commercial lots with the widening of a private street. They're replating three lot, three commercial lots into four commercial lots. This replat does comply with all City of Longview's requirements. Staff does recommend approval of this replat. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
How did they build a street that was too small to begin with?
They, the street complies with city standards. It's the right-of-way, or well, there were some easements on the side that needed to be widened, and so that's, the street does meet private street standards when it was installed.
And that is a private street, but there's no tee head for the fire department?
I think there is now. It wasn't in place at that time, but I think they installed it. These are, these aerials were taken in 2016 while this project was under construction. But the street is wide, they just needed some wider easements for the water and sewer lines.
And now I call for anyone in the audience who wants to speak in support of this agenda item. Please come to the microphone. Seeing none, is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. We will call for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Agenda item A has passed. Agenda item B, please.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application RP 18-03 Home Depot, filed by Premier Management, to replat approximately 6.78 acres of Lot 1A, Block 1, Home Depot, into three commercial lots located on the south side of Hawkins Parkway, west of 4th Street.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Mr. Rogers, you want to just tell us a little bit about this one, too?
Yes, basically, we just took the lot. It's got the diversion ditch that runs through the middle of it, and we just took, and there was an existing road that was there when it was a mobile home park, and we just used that to split the lot that comes down and L shapes out to that Home Depot road that runs between Hawkins and the Home Depot.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir. Staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to replat one lot into three commercial lots located on the south side of Hawkins Parkway. The replat does comply with City of Longview requirements, and staff does recommend approval of this replat. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff? If not, I will ask for the general public comments. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in support of this, in addition to Mr. Rogers, or anyone in opposition of? Apparently, there are none. The public hearing is closed. Call for a motion and a second.
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Angela, agenda item C, please.
Yes, ma'am. A public hearing will be held to consider M 18-01, amending the City of Longview's future land use map from office to retail located at the southwest, located southwest of the intersection of McCann Road and Spring Hill Road. As you can see here on the future land use map, the current, at this location that we've got here and this hatched on McCann Road, the planning department is requesting to reclassify that area along that west side of McCann Road from office to retail. In 2015, the comprehensive plan was adopted, and at that time, a new future land use map was adopted, which changed this area and this parcel from retail to office. Prior to the adoption of this plan, there was a rezone granted in 2008 for plan development without site plan approval for retail and multifamily for this property. Staff is recommending that the future land use map be amended to provide more opportunity for retail development along this collector roadway. Adjacent residential neighborhoods will still be protected through site plan review process and by implementing the landscaping, screening, and buffer requirements currently within the zoning ordinance. As seen on the future land use map, retail is located to the east of this property. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
When it opens to retail, what does that allow to go in there?
Well, this is a future land use map, so it allows for, which there is a request later on in this agenda, it'll allow for people to request a retail-type zoning. And so, right now, the zoning for this is a plan development, which they did rezone this in 2008 to allow for retail uses, and at that time, the, it complied with the comprehensive plan. But when the comprehensive plan and the future land use map was updated, it changed it to office, which now does not comply with the future land use plan. And so now that, there's a, there's a zoning case later on in the agenda that is asking for self-storage, mini warehouse self-storage, which is allowed in general retail with a specific use permit. So it is allowing for people to ask for retail zoning.
So the city's actually the applicant. We don't have anyone else to speak on behalf of this.
Yes, yes. That is correct, yes, ma'am.
All right. Any additional questions of staff?
The bank's right south of it.
The bank is right east of it, to the south of its apartment complex. I do not know.
Any predictions of our road?
Where's the bank?
The bank is directly to the east.
Do you have a pointer?
I'm trying to point to it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the island area there to the east is where the bank is.
Yeah.
To the south.
This is where, this is where the bank is, right here.
No, down lower.
Yeah. Oh, right there, yes.
Down there, yes.
The bank is right there.
Apartment's in the pink, if you're looking at the picture.
The apartments are right due south, right here.
The new ones.
Yes, the Amberwood Apartments.
Long-term, is, is any area discussed the development of McCann Road to growth? I'm not saying it affects this, but I would like to know, because that's a...
That's a horrible intersection.
No, I'm not, no matter what goes there, I'm always interested, as I have in the past, are we leaving enough room to grow the road by granting somebody the ability to move in there? And they go build, and we don't have enough right-of-way to expand McCann Road. That road, 10 years from now, can't handle the traffic it has today, much less what's going to happen 10 years with the growth. I mean, behind the bank, that's, that's why the busiest little intersection there is. And many of us go there all the time. I don't go straight, I take a left. I'm just asking, is that something, is that something we need to, it's not that we consider it, but it is up for conversation. That road's pretty skinny. Would we have enough room, if we do this, for that people to build their building and we go take part of their road, their frontage one of these days, to expand the road?
What is the easement? What is the right-of-way there? It's pretty wide.
Right, and that's two lanes, am I not correct?
Because it is.
We're always looking, we have this conversation with every meeting about putting a center turn on.
If I had to guess, I'm not a traffic engineer, we're an engineer, but if I had to guess, if they were going to try to make some improvements there, because of the way McCann comes in, not at a 90-degree, that'd be one of the things they'd try to do to fix it, and it may, you know, Spring Hill, you know, we have, I know on the plan is for Spring Hill to expand and go farther to the east. I would imagine that they would look at ways to bring McCann in and maybe even isolate this small section of McCann, that might be one way, you know, because it does come in at an awkward angle, create some issues, and I don't know how you'd fix that without trying to realign it. And as close as it is to where the spur ties in, it may just be better off to try to reduce the amount of traffic on it rather than expand it.
Or close that part and make it to normal.
Yeah. I mean, we did kind of talk about that when we were reviewing this application and all, and looking at, you know, in the zoning case that she alluded to, the type of use that's going in there, it's pretty low in-and-out volume, and that's why we were kind of like, well, you know, this versus an office complex or any kind of retail, you know, when you're looking at, you know, self-storage, they just, you know, people come in once or twice, and you just don't, you don't have a lot of traffic out the gate.
But we don't know the easement.
So I've got a couple of questions. Angela, this on our map is showing, is the apartment complex zoned office? It looks pink on our map.
The future land use map has it as office. Now, it is zoned for apartments.
Right.
But the future land use map is a guide to help staff, so it is, you know, there are times where it might not be 100% accurate, although office, in office zoning, as of our zoning ordinance right now, we allow apartments in office zoning. So if it was zoned office, but the south, the apartment complex is zoned appropriately, it is zoned for apartments. The future land use map designates it as office, which is allowed.
And these will be facing really the back of BTH Bank.
The, it'll be facing McCann Road, the self-storage facility, is that what you're asking? Is it going to be, it's going to be facing McCann Road.
And then BTH faces the spur?
BTH faces the spur.
Southside, actually.
Well, yeah, you're right, it does kind of face both ways. Yeah.
The HDR that's over to the west, what is that?
Huh? I'm sorry.
Is that part of the plan, future land use?
I'm sorry.
The brown section.
The brown section, yes. The future land use map, that's high-density residential, so that'd be apartments. But over here, there's a, I think, an in-bridge site right there, and so they kind of enter in, I believe, off, actually off this property, I believe, so.
Yeah, they have an access.
Yeah, they have an access.
Kind of splits between...
South Park, do you mind?
Mm-hmm. I think they used to enter off of Hawkins, but they enter off of McCann now.
So potentially, that could be even more traffic.
What could be more traffic, I'm sorry?
HDR, those two HDR sites already in the pot.
Well, right now, it's an in-bridge site. I mean, it's been there for a very long time. And there is actually, right here, if you look at this gray, this is a lot of floodplain and floodway that kind of inhibits this piece of property.
That you have in the other case.
I'm gonna, I can kind of show you in this, in the zoning case. So looking at this aerial, you see, there's this in-bridge site right here, and then the apartments are directly to the south, and here's BTH Bank. And right here, I'll show you in a future map, there's floodway and floodplain.
So, yeah, anything that developed in that area that you were talking about would access off of Hawkins?
Yeah, so this is that in-bridge site, and then this is the floodplain, and this yellow is the floodway.
And right now, we're just changing the zoning, so if they decide to come back and build something, they would have to come back to us.
Well, right now, we're just changing the future, we're requesting, changing the future land use map.
That would allow them to.
Would allow them to. Now, there is a case on this agenda requesting a zoning change.
So if this one doesn't pass, the other one doesn't go?
Wouldn't comply.
Yeah, wouldn't comply with the future land use map.
Any other questions for staff?
So it is your recommendation, Angela, it is your recommendation that we change the future land use map?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
All right.
If there are no further questions, then I will open it to the general public. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak in support of this change to the land use map?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Hamilton. I'm with Johnson &amp; Pace Incorporated. Really wasn't planning on speaking at this point, because we do have an agenda item later on, but this is pretty important for us to, for this to pass in order for our zoning request to be considered or to be able to be passed later in the agenda. So, if there's anything that I can add to what Angela's already shared with you to answer any questions about it, this is a, it's a formality that we can't even ask for the PD zoning change to present our site plan to allow the, the storage buildings to be in there, unless this is, this future land use map is changed to what's being requested right now. So it's a future land use map, it's not actually a zoning designation at the moment, it's just a glimpse of what could be requested in the future. So if there's any questions to me, I'll be happy to answer them, otherwise, I'll sit down and...
But Jeff, do you know anything as far as what the actual easements are on each side? Is there easements on each side?
Well, I can tell you on our site plan, we're leaving a 15-foot landscape buffer between what we believe is the right-of-way line and where we are building our fence, just decorative fence in that area. So there's, so there's 15 feet of landscaping that we were proposing for our development, so if in the future, for some reason, if that road were needed to be, needed to be widened, then you would have that 15 feet that could be taken for that right-of-way. But I do agree with Michael and Angela, in this case, just the way Spring Hill Road is constructed, the intent would be to keep the majority of your traffic headed east-west on, on Spring Hill Road and tie into the spur, and then head south, and hopefully, we would start to deter traffic using that little section of McCann Road.
Because eventually, some, someday, there'll probably be a red light there.
Very well could be, but, but I do see, and I believe to someone else's point, what our proposed use in here will actually, would reduce the amount of trips and traffic that would be expected to access that piece of property. If it were apartments or retail or something of that nature, you'd have a lot higher intense use, so, so I think what we're proposing may help with the concern that you have there along that stretch of road.
Is your primary entrance from the north?
Our primary entrance is actually on the south. Right now, there's a, there's a concrete driveway, driveway apron that is constructed, and it's what Inbridge uses to access their compressor station. We're proposing to use that same access point.
Is that a dedicated street?
It's not a street.
It's not a street, it's just an access.
It's a gravel road.
Driveway, yeah.
Right, it's, it's...
Yeah, it's a driveway, yeah.
It is a driveway for access to McCann Road, and then there's a, they have an easement across our subject property to get to the compressor station.
Can you put an arrow on that, just to show?
It's, it's right on the bottom of the hatch, that hatched area, the driveway is right there.
Like, kind of right here. And you'll see it in the, on the zoning change, there'll be a site plan that shows where the driveway is.
Now, I don't want to muddy the water too much, we do have a second access, though. On the north side, it's for emergency vehicle access only, it's not for public, but that, we'll get to that in our, in our zoning case.
Any other questions of Mr. Hamilton? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak in support of? Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition of this request to the land use map? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. The chair will entertain a motion.
Motion for approval.
The motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. I will abstain. I believe that was an approval. Thank you. The motion carries. All right, agenda item D.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z 18-01, filed by King Gidry, to rezone approximately 2.04 acres of Lot 1A and 1B, Forest Square, Unit 1, from Plan Development, PD 30, to General Retail Zoning District located southwest corner of Forest Square and McCann Road.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Give us your name and address, sir.
King Gidry, 2912 Red Gum Gap, Longview.
Thank you.
Oh, our plan here is to rezone this from PD to general retail in order to construct a 9,000-square-foot strip center on the west side of the lot.
Are there any questions of the applicant? This is immediately behind the restaurant.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Does not include any of the restaurant property?
No, that's incorrect. The plat now is a little bit incorrect, it's been replatted last year, but the, I guess if you go to the next screen, one of the big issues, I had a couple of calls concerning parking, and we addressed that parking, we calculated the, the use of the restaurant. There's actually an extra, about 25 parking spaces that the restaurant does not need, so we'd have some shared parking with the new facility as well.
So there will be no kind of a divider between this development and the back of the restaurant?
No, ma'am, it'll be just an open layout. Open layout, yes, ma'am.
Okay. 9,000 square feet, which direction will it face?
It'll be facing McCann Road.
Okay.
There'll be, we haven't, we only done our preliminary drawings right now, but we're kind of deciding whether to remove the entrance on Forest Square, right behind Little Mexico, and then move that entrance a little further west there.
Okay.
What is that behind it?
What do you mean, right here, or?
No, the...
Right here?
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it's a strip of land that belongs to this Forest Square Center.
It's kind of a nature area, it's some native trees and some...
Yeah, it's used as a, it's used as a natural buffer, back when it was Tony Brumbus, there was a natural buffer there prior to just purchasing the land.
Are you talking about demolishing the restaurant or just building behind it?
No, ma'am, just, the restaurant would stay, and we would build behind it, that's correct.
How many units do you propose being in this strip center?
We haven't decided, but maximum six, least would be four. We had thought about a 3,000-square-foot, putting an additional restaurant back there, but we haven't really decided yet.
Okay.
And where are you going to enter, you're saying you're discussing if you're not...
You'd have two entrances, you'd have the main McCann entrance, where Little Mexico is now, and you have two entrances, if you wish, one from McCann on the, on the corner in the rear of the restaurant. The one on the rear, we're kind of deciding whether to leave it there or move it, probably about that location, yeah, right there.
Mm-hmm.
That way, those two entrances wouldn't be so close together with the increased traffic through the strip center.
So you would keep the other entrance, or you would close it off?
I would close that one and move it back.
Move it to the west.
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
And then the other is from McCann itself.
Yep.
We're just cleaning, cleaning you up a little bit in the back of this restaurant, too.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone both tracts of land from PD 30, which PD 30 was for Forest Square, this development here. Back in, I think it was in the 70s, they rezoned this, all this tract of land to PD 30, and track by track, it's kind of been rezoned out of PD 30 into general retail to allow for future development. This portion of McCann Road is a texted right-of-way, which is a minor arterial. Forest Square is a local street, but is appropriate for this type of development as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map and surrounding uses. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff? Okay, the general public, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to, to speak further in support of this agenda item? Seeing none, is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The chair will entertain a motion and a second.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Agenda item E.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z 18-02, filed by Brownstone Ventures LLC, to rezone approximately 5.92 acres of Abstract 4, IC Skiller &amp; Survey, Track 93 and Track 93-01, Section 5, from Plan Development 2 to Multifamily 3, zoning district located on the east side of Gilmer Road, north side of Fairmont Street.
Is the applicant present? Please come to the microphone and introduce yourself.
My name is Jeremy Mears, I'm the Vice President of Brownstone, from 1,000 Louisville Avenue, Monroe, Louisiana. We are apartment development... Louisville Avenue, Monroe, Louisiana. Uh, we are apartment developers. Uh, we build across the state of Texas, Louisiana. Uh, just, just brief background, we've probably built about 15,000 units of apartments. Very, uh, I've been doing this a long time, for over 40 years, with some of our partners. And, um, we are proposing to build some apartments at this location. There are quite a few apartments around in that area, all in those different corners. So I think that it's a great location for apartments, considering there's, uh, already many apartment developments already in that area. And so we're just here to, to try to take the first step in, in getting the zoning process going so we can start to work on securing some financing. So that's what we're here for.
What was the correct pronunciation on your last name?
Mears. M-E-A-R-S. Yes, ma'am.
I thought I heard Myers, and I couldn't get Myers out of that, so.
Got you. Okay.
Thank you.
But I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Mears?
What does the- Uh, right now, we're proposing 84 units.
Tax credit or market?
Both. We'll have a mix of both.
What was your question?
Tax credit or market?
Got it.
So you moved it from 76 up to 84?
We're, I don't know if we were at 76. It maybe, I don't remember stating that one, but right now-
So we're planning to build approximately 76 units of multifamily apartment units on the property?
It might have been on a, on a previous document. You know, when you start running numbers, I think 84 worked just a little better, so.
How many stories do you know?
It'll be mostly two. It'll be some two and three-story splits, is what we're proposing. We haven't got all the final designs just yet. Um, still worth a pretty challenging site, 'cause there's quite a bit of topo on it. So we're, we're trying to just face everything and work with the natural grade lines that are falling down, but, uh, um, but probably two and three-story, a little mix of both.
I presume you lose some of that at the bottom. I used to live off the stone wall, and I was, seemed like I paid some flood insurance.
Yeah, there's a major floodway. It's a floodplain down at the bottom. So we're gonna end up having to build some retaining walls and things of that nature to, to work with the side, 'cause it falls off pretty good back there. But once we get to that phase in the engineering, that'll all have to be engineered, and civil engineer will be involved, trying to keep us out of the floodway, work with the floodplain. But you're right, there is some water that rolls through there.
And Angela, that would be something they'd be coming back to us for, to protect, because that's a, I mean, that, that, all those people around are gonna have some effect if we take away the topography. If I'm Georgia, stone wall.
Yeah, any grading, any of the development process will be, I mean, our city engineer will take a look at all that. Um, now, um, I know there is some floodplain on the property, but it's very little. It's at the top end of the property, um, as he said. I'm trying to get while my-
That will all be engineered, and-
Yeah.
Once we get to that phase, that's a totally different review process.
There's just a little bit of floodplain just right here that clips the corner of their property. It's very little that's on their property, but our, you know, our public works department, our city engineer, will take a look at that through the development process.
There's a creek on the north side of it. It goes down to, uh, Bill Owens?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, right behind my old house was the creek. It cuts underneath Stone Wall, and you did, you know, 'cause we had to have flood insurance back then.
Typically, on these developments, you're, sometimes we end up retaining our water on-site. You can do it through underground piping or retaining ponds, things of that nature, to hold that water and then release it slowly. Uh, so there's, there's all kind of things that'll have to be reviewed once we get to that, to that phase. So.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mears. Staff?
Thank you. Uh, the applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 5.92 acres, uh, from Plan Development 2, uh, which was for retail-type uses, to multifamily, uh, located on the east side of Gilmer Road, north of Fairmont Street. Uh, the property is directly to the east of the property. Uh, this subject property is zone multifamily 3. Uh, there are several apartment complexes located along Fairmont, uh, west of this location, uh, and along Gilmer Road. Uh, Gilmer Road is a texted roadway, which is a prin, uh, and a principal arterial. Uh, Fairmont is a collector. Um, both, uh, this type of use is appropriate along both of these roadways. Uh, staff does find the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map, which designates this area for retail and high-density residential. Um, and it is also consistent with surrounding uses. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff?
One of the questions I have is in relation to that creek. Will they, will they have to be able to dissipate the water off, out of the creek the same as if it was before the building was there? Or is that, does that make sense? Is all that water gonna be rushing down that hill and down into Bill Owens?
No, and that's what he alluded to. They may have to do some detention to slow that water down, 'cause the way, with it being a floodplain, they, they can't impact the floodplain and floodway. They'll have to certify that, and then also have to certify that their, the water flow that they're creating from all their impervious cover is not gonna further impact. So generally, what they'll do is through detain, detention ponds, where they'll hold it and then release it slowly so that it doesn't have, like, one-time impact.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, general public. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak in support of this project? Your name and address, please.
My name is Shawna Barlow. I'm at 803 Gilmer Road with the Longview Dream Center. The only, um, question that we've really had is we run a food pantry across the road at the, where they're proposing this, and we were just concerned about the number of units that were gonna go in there and if they were gonna be considered low-income housing.
Well, he, um, he replied that it would be mixed.
Mixed, okay.
Did I hear that correctly? But I don't know what percentage, if there is, if that's known. Is it?
Uh, I think we're about 20% market. I believe this is the number we have. It's an affordable housing tax credit program, so we'll have, we'll have, we'll have a mix of both. We have market rate units and affordable units in the development.
And so the maximum number of units that you expect there is 84?
Eighty-four, yes, ma'am.
Okay. That was really the only question we had, how it was gonna affect our food pantry. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Anyone else? Anyone that wishes to speak in opposition?
Hello, thank you very much. My name's Chris Applequist, um, 9034. Yeah, that'd be great. Uh, 9034 Meadownoe Drive, Dallas, Texas. We've got some handouts, um, to explain where we're coming from. We have a few issues with the rezoning here. Um, primarily one, um, when we looked at the consolidated plan, and you have a handout showing that, um, essentially this, this is marked a purple section, which is retail. Um, it's existing retail now. I believe there's a retail, uh, center, a dog, uh, related centers to the north, and then there's a bank to the south. When we look at it, it looked like the consolidated plan, future land use plan, um, really kinda laid this out as retail, which seems to make sense. Two, we've got another handout that shows vacant multifamily land in the area. So if you look at about a quarter-mile to a half-mile radius, you've got around 130 acres of vacant multifamily land that you could probably build 2,500 to 3,000 units on. Um, doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to rezone land now for multifamily when you have so much vacant multifamily land already available. Um, and then thirdly, um, you know, sort of the reason why, why the, the case is being heard now is we're all affordable housing developers. Our group is Generation Housing Development. Um, we build affordable housing. We're based here in Texas. Uh, we started working on a project about three months ago, four months ago, and when we met with the city and staff, it was our understanding that the policy in place was they would vote on giving resolutions of support to pursue tax credits if you had a site that was already zoned multifamily. And so we took that, and we went out, we found a multifamily site. It's been zoned since the eighties. Local owner, MF3. It's at Fairmont and, uh, Bill Owens Parkway. Um, started working on that. It's 10 acres. We're gonna use six acres. We're gonna dedicate the rest as a park to the city to tie into Rice Park. Um, and we started early, and we feel like we, we really sort of followed, um, the criteria. These are all gonna go to city council on the eighth, next week, and city council wants to see that, that folks already have land that's zoned for multifamily. And it seemed like, I think there's about seven or eight applications that are going in. Um, the majority of them have zoning in place. This one doesn't. It seems like they're, they're trying to get the zoning in place prior to the hearing, uh, which I don't think that was in the spirit of, of what the city was wanting to see. If you, if you look at some of the deals that were brought last year, there was some zoning issues that popped up, um, where the city supported affordable housing, and then they needed to get rezoning, and neighbors got upset and things like that. So, um, you know, we think we have a plan that makes a lot of sense. Um, we started early, and it's one of those things where it seems like a developer came in a little bit later and found a site that was a little bit more competitive, didn't have zoning, and it's sort of throwing a monkey wrench in, in the whole thing with all the work we've already put into it. So with that, we would appreciate a denial on this one.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition of?
Yes. I'm Suzanne Smith, and I have been a longtime resident of Longview, Texas. My address is 1 Daisy Court, Longview, Texas, 75604. Um, and I will disclose that front. Um, I am representing Mr. Applequist in the purchase of the property, um, on the corner of Bill Owens in Fairmont. And this is what, I'm gonna kinda go into it in a couple different sections. My first reason for asking for this to not be approved is being a longtime resident. I grew up in Pine Tree, graduated from Pine Tree High School. Look how much land is available, this multifamily, that's already there, that's zoned. And this is what my concern is, is we come in and we have developers that come into our town and want to change that, that zoning to make it the multifamily, to be able to do the apartments. And then if they are not awarded their bid, you know, when they put it before the state, we've changed our zoning for something where they just go on to the next parcel of land. I think there's enough land in that vicinity that was zoned multifamily. Let's encourage these developers to come in, choose that land, even if they have to do a ton of dirt work. If you know where the parcel is that, that Mr. Applequist, uh, that company has under, that has been for sale forever. But they're willing to do all the dirt work that they're gonna have to do, 'cause that's in a floodplain, uh, over there by the park. Uh, or it's, it's a very low-lying area. They're gonna have to do a lot of dirt work there. So I'm thinking, let's encourage these developers. I mean, we are so happy they're coming to Longview. We are happy for the development, but let's choose parcels that we already have zoned for that, rather than going through and changing our zoning for a parcel of land that we don't even know if he's gonna get, get the award to be able to build. Do you see what my point is? Is that there's so many other parcels. If you look in your, in your handout of areas where they could have chosen, yes, it might be more work. If you look in your folder at, uh, the vacant zone multifamily land, look at all the parcels. There's 70 acres that could hold about 1,500 units, uh, that, you can see that in the very, kinda the center part of the map. There's 20 additional acres. There's tons of land that's available, but yes, it's gonna cost that developer more to come in and do the dirt work and get the topo the way they need it in order to build. So, like I said, I understand I represent him, but as a citizen as well and a longtime aide, I know this area very well. And that, that area is gonna require, no matter who does it, they're gonna require, uh, dirt work, and they're gonna have to address the drainage. So, um, I just hope y'all think very long about this before you go and change something that, that is in place. It'd be different if there was no other parcels in that vicinity to purchase, but look how many there are. Look how many that are available, um, that have been sitting and sitting and sitting for years. So, that is my, that is my situation on it. That's how I feel about it. So, any questions or anything? No? Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Where is the location? Is this it, right here?
No, this is the proposed.
Yeah, here we go.
This is Fairmont.
Mm-huh.
It would be just-
This is, yeah, this is Bill Owens. Okay.
This is the basically what-
We can ask, but I believe that-
This is the main, uh, that's the main empty big tree right there.
Mm-huh.
There one is, and you come down, and I believe she was just proposing this is the thing. We can ask Angela to clarify.
Anyone else that wants to speak in support of or in opposition of this agenda item? Do you have any additional questions?
Uh, a laundry list.
A laundry list?
Just because something is zoned multifamily does not mean it's for sale. Does everybody understand that? That the reference was made that this piece of property, and this piece of property, and this piece of property, and this piece of property. Yes, multifamily 3. But if it's for sale, as was represented, versus the size of their project against that acreage, everything else that, that we've discussed is beyond the footage of dirt needed to do 84 units.
Angela, did a letter go out to the folks that's on, uh, Georgia Lane and Fair Creek?
Let me go to our notification map. We notify, um, per state laws, you'll know. Uh, we notify everybody within 200 feet, and so that's the map. That's the people we notified.
Can I say something?
Yes, Mr. Mears?
Well, just, just to clarify, you know, this is obviously a very competitive process. Uh, the reason that we came in when we did, 'cause there's a book, there's a, there's a set of rules called the QAP, and so they don't finalize rules until probably little, not, it wasn't three months ago. So what happened was, this other developer who just came and spoke, he found a piece of property that was not a winning site, and we waited till all the rules were completed and found a site that could actually win in the state. It's not just competing in Longview. It's competing against Nash, Texarkana, all these other states. So there's a list of rules. Rules came out. We found the winning, the best site to be competitive and win, and now there's a little bit of sour grapes going on. So, just so I can be clear about that. So, this is a great site. There's no guarantee that any developer's gonna win in Longview. And I think, you know, Brownstone, we're probably one of the top tax credit development companies in the state of Texas. Got a great reputation. So I'll just ask for your support and just let the best man win. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. The chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Can I see a show of hands, please? All in favor? Any opposed? Same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item, what's our next agenda item?
F.
F, please.
A public hearing will be held to consider application PD-18-02, filed by St. Mary's Catholic Church, requesting to rezone approximately 0.691 acres of Abstract 258, PP Rain Survey, Track 44, Section 5, from Single Family 4-2, Plan Development PD-18-02, for a columbarium located on the east side of Ridgewood Drive, north of Hollybrook Drive.
Thank you. Is the applicant present?
Dave Blazek, 1829 Northwood Court, Longview, and I'm representing St. Mary's here this evening.
Do we have any-
And basically, uh, our request is to take approximately 0.69 acres, uh, of our property that's, uh, zoned for residential currently and change it to plan development for the purpose of building a columbarium.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of our applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, the applicant is requesting a rezone from Single Family 4 to Plan Development to allow for the construction of a columbarium. Uh, you may have, um, we had a similar case a, several years ago from St. Matthews, um, which was along the same lines, if y'all remember. Um, a columbarium is a, it's an arrangement of openings in a wall into which urn containing ashes of the deceased are placed. Uh, the proposed structure will be built with a series of brick walls. Um, it actually, it's not really a structure. It's just brick walls. Uh, the current plan calls for approximately 378 niches, uh, within the columbarium. Uh, the applicant has retained approximately 0.507 acres of land for future development, as you see here on this site plan. Um, chapter 711 of the- Chapter 711 of the Texas Health and Safety Code allows for the establishment and use of a columbarium by an organized religious society or sect that is exempt from income taxation on land that is owned by the society or sect and is part of the campus on which an existing principal church building is located. The site will utilize existing parking lot, which is owned and maintained by the church. The columbarium will connect to an already existing grocery garden. And through the development process, this project will be required to meet all City of Longview requirements. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions for staff? General public? Those in support or opposition, would you please come to the microphone and introduce yourselves? Seeing none? If there are no further questions, the chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The agenda item carries. Agenda item G. I must recuse myself from this particular business item and turn the chair over to Commissioner Jenkins. Call me when to come back.
Get them out of G, staff?
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD 18-03 filed by Johnson &amp; Pace Incorporated requesting to rezone approximately 5.645 acres of abstract 258 PP Rain survey tracks 20, 21, 21-01, 21-02, and track 21-03, section eight, from multifamily three and planned development PD 08-01 to planned development PD 18-03 for self-storage mini warehouse located west of McCann Road and south of Spring Hill Road.
Is the applicant present? Name and address again.
Yes, sir. My name is Jeff Hamilton. I'm with Johnson &amp; Pace Incorporated. We've been working on this project for, I guess, a couple of months now. Our client had contacted us for the piece of property that's been for sale for a while and his planned use or his vision was to develop some self-storage, the buildings on the property. And knowing that, I guess there's a stigma often associated with self-storage buildings, he said he wanted to do something upscale, something nice, something that fit with the community. And very appreciative of the zoning that we have now that allows for something like this to be able to be located closer to where an end user would actually need storage instead of putting it on the outskirts of town, on the fringes. So we started early, working with Michael and Angela, just saying, this is what our client would like to do. He wants to do some air-conditioned space storage and also have a few unconditioned space to store, provide storage units, have a little office up front and just, we wanted to visit with the city to see what might need, what that site might look like and something that would be fitting with the area. So Michael and Angela explained to us with the current PD zoning, we were allowed to do something like this, but we were required to submit site plans, some information about the type of architecture of the buildings, and just provide you a better picture of what we're planning. So just some of the nuts and bolts of it, what we're requesting is to be able to construct up to 50,000 square feet of conditioned space and up to 20,000 square feet of unconditioned space. And with the site plan layout that we had, I guess, on the previous slide, your large rectangle areas are conditioned space, the slender one that's to the right of the site in a small little rectangle would be unconditioned space. The office is located near that existing drive that we talked about a little earlier in our meeting. But, so what we're proposing to do with the property is, after looking at the architecture construction type in the area, after visiting with Bob Dyer and Clint over at BTH Bank, just wanted to make sure that what we were proposing was something that they were, would be approving of. And of course, I can't, they're not here, so I don't want to say, yes, they're all for this, but my client met with them and received no opposition to our plans. So we're trying to reach out and I believe we've talked with everyone that we needed to talk with to make sure that they had a chance to provide input on our plans. So what we're planning is, we have a 15-foot landscape buffer around the property, just along the McCann Road corridor. The type of landscaping, this is actually our landscape plan prepared by our landscape architect. It's the same planning material and style as what you would see at the BTH Bank. So we're trying to create a cohesive, uniform corridor along McCann Road that would be something really nice for folks driving through that area. That's framed with a backdrop of, like a wrought iron fence with masonry columns so that it's spaced something similar to the Amberwood Apartments, which are just south of us. So we're trying to pull some elements from the developments around us and bring it into this development so it feels like it was all part of a planned development and developed at one time. So yeah, it's a good picture of the type of landscaping. That view's from Spur 63, the front of the bank, you know, it's the arced landscape islands and then your tall hollies, or I'm going to get the wrong species on that. But those plants are what are called out on our landscape plan. So that's, our owners, our client is willing to commit to that style of landscaping and specifically the plan that you have in front of you is what they're proposing. As far as architecture? Let's see, there's, that is the building that has the office on it and then our largest conditioned space, I believe. So we have, I mean, it's a single-story structure. The tower gets up to a two-story height, it's just for, more for our architect, for our, I guess, advertising, if you will, that's so that we can be seen. But it's styled so that it's, I guess, athletically pleasing to the proportions of the building. We're proposing to have a stone veneer on the building that is similar to what you would see over at BTH Bank. The rest of the panels on the McCann roadside, which is the closest to you on the right-hand side of the image, that's, I think there's a fancy term on there, it basically means it's an ephesus or an artificial stucco finish so that there's nothing about the building that is expected to look like a metal building or a typical metal storage building that you would see with doors exposed to the outside, you know, viewed from the public's perception as they're driving down McCann Road. So we're trying to say, this is the level of architecture that we're looking to achieve, basic proportions. You know, beyond that, I'm not real sure what else I could add to it. I'm sure our dialogue here with questions that you may have will bring up several other items. So I'll, I think I'll stop right here and give you a chance to ask any questions.
Any other question?
One question I have is, as this develops into an area of retail and things like that, is there any idea as far as a walkway or sidewalk or anything that's built into this? I can't really tell, but eventually there will be people from that apartment complex or something such as that walking north towards the development that goes up towards Spring Hill Road.
Well, seeing that the apartments don't have sidewalks, we have 15 feet of that landscape area, there's certainly space there that a sidewalk could be put in in the future, harking back to our earlier.
Right.
Future land use plan and your question about if the road needed to be widened or a right-of-way needed to be acquired, there's space there where a sidewalk could be put in. But if we were to put a sidewalk in right now, it would be that proverbial sidewalk to nowhere that I'm not real sure who would use right now.
Right.
But there's space for it.
Eventually something might go up there at the Spring Hill area cutoff, up at the north end of what else?
Yes, there's certainly space there for it.
So the commercial guys are not held to the sidewalk ordinance?
Right now, we do not require sidewalks in our current ordinance. Now, that is something we're looking at in the UDC to, you know, implement, but right now, the current ordinances do not require sidewalks.
And so you did say that there would be no garage doors seen from the street.
We have a, I'm not, do you have pointers that I can?
This sort of points.
Sort of points where I can, I can attempt to walk.
It's not that great there. Yeah. Are you trying to point to this one?
Right, that building. So the way the buildings are oriented to the road, as a car's driving down the road, they can't, if they're looking in between the buildings as they're driving, they're not, you know, they're not looking down the road like they should be. But we have, our landscaping, you'll see, is centered on those buildings so that we're blocking any views down, down those corridors. And specifically, where Angela, right there, where Angela has the mouse setting right now, there are two doors right there that if a person wanted to look for a door, they may see those two doors if they're looking through the landscaping and through the fencing and everything else that we have there as a buffer, you may see a door there. But otherwise.
Overhead door or passenger door?
That is a small roll-up door. Small as in, I believe it's like a five-foot door. So it's, so we've laid this out in an attempt to screen any of those type doors or to keep you from having that view of what we all are used to, are accustomed to seeing on a self-storage building.
Okay.
Is there any type of outside storage?
No, sir.
Okay. How do you get into the big building?
In the center of the building. Angela, if you'll slide that pointer up, right there, and now to the left. Right there, there's a door that goes into it. And so then your access, once you get in there, it's all self-contained. Now, there's some emergency exits, things of that nature, but your main access, and that's similar to the three conditioned spaces. Each one has their main access in that inset. And then all circulation is internal to that.
So you have hallways?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Then one other question, Jeff. In going into, you're entering on the south end here, right?
Yes, sir.
What you're doing coming in, is that where, I know you said that there's another entrance up here at the top, but from the standpoint of being able to get fire or ambulance or anything in, that's within the city standard of making that turn right there and going in?
Yes, sir. We've made sure we provided adequate space for fire apparatus access around the side and all the way around the building. So they could come in on the south side, go make a right-hand turn and go past the office through those gates and around and in between each building, all the way to the north and then back down to the south and come out.
Or go this way.
Yeah. Well, you can go out that gate or you, we've, essentially, we provided adequate space for access around all the buildings. And two points of access in case one of them was blocked for catastrophic event.
As you pointed out, I saw it on there. Sorry.
Well, it's, there's a lot to take in on a little site like that.
I was just saying, I can see a big fire truck backing out of there.
No, no, no.
Artist conception here. That's primarily the office in the first building, correct?
Yes, sir. That's the office in the first building. Now, the reason we provided that one is just that you can get a feel for, I guess, the bulk modeling of the buildings. Now, take off that office and that's what the other two conditioned spaces will look like as well.
That's my question.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Would it help to say that we also have built into our landscape plans on the west portion, you can see some large circles, those are large diameter existing trees that we are planning to protect, preserve so that, of course, we have a lot of new and shiny landscaping along the McCann Road corridor, but we are keeping some of the large canopies in the back. And I guess just one point to, you know, BTH Bank, if you remember, not too long ago, that was a big stand of trees. And they took the whole thing out and then landscaped it and everyone says, look at that bank, it looks great. So we're, there's proof that we can landscape it and make it look really nice.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
The applicant is requesting to rezone from PD 08-01 and multifamily to planned development PD 18-03 for self-storage mini warehouse. In 2008, this property was rezoned from general retail and agriculture to planned development without site plan approval. Within this planned development, it was allowed, general retail and multifamily was allowed. This was to allow for the property owner to better market this property and ensure that quality development occurs in appropriate locations. Within this planned development, the developer had actually planned for a self-storage facility to be located on the spur behind Princeton and Misty Ridge Apartments. As I had stated previously, in 2015, the zoning ordinance was amended to create self-storage mini warehouse use category definitions and parking requirements. In the past, the zoning ordinance had a use under special industrial processes that was called storage warehouse. Staff had interpreted that classification to mean self-storage mini warehouse. Self-storage mini warehouse was not really defined in the zoning ordinance, and there were inquiries into allowing this use in general retail zoning. Therefore, staff at that time in 2005 amended the zoning ordinance to create that use and allow it in general retail with a specific use permit and by right in light and heavy commercial and industrial districts and with a planned development. As Jeff had stated previously, the applicant is proposing to construct five self-storage warehouses with an office building that will be approximately 72,000 square feet total. Approximately 52,000 square feet will be air-conditioned and 20,000 unconditioned storage space. No outside storage of vehicles, trailers, recreational vehicles, or anything similar will be allowed on this site. The buildings will have a minimum setback of 30 feet from the property line, from the front property line, 10 feet from the rear and side property lines. The buildings will be metal buildings with metal roofs, however, the building will be partially clad with masonry veneer, as Mr. Hamilton stated, with synthetic plaster veneer panels, which is stucco-like. A portion of the exterior will have smooth-faced panels in the porch areas. These porches will be entryways into the building. This site will have one monument sign, not to exceed 50 square feet, and will be constructed to match the look and feel of the building. A 15-foot landscape area has been proposed along McCann Road with decorative iron fence that has masonry columns. The applicant has stated that the landscaping along McCann Road will have the same look as the bank directly across from it. There will be boxwoods, hollies, and hawthorn shrubs planted in a manner where they will grow into a solid hedge. There will be additional shrubs planted in areas along McCann Road where there is a building separation. Also, there will be several new trees planted along McCann Road as well. To the rear of the property, the applicant, as he stated previously, will try to preserve as many trees as possible and provide an eight-foot solid wood fence along the rear and side property lines with a minimum 10-foot buffer. All landscape requirement, will be, landscaping will meet requirements set forth in the zoning ordinance, and through the development process, the developer will meet all City of Longview codes. The development will have two driveways onto McCann Road. There is, as he stated previously, there is an existing oilfield access road on the southern portion of this lot, which will be shared by this development. Staff does recommend approval of this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for the commissioners? If not, I'd like to open the public hearing. All those in further support, come forward. Hearing none, all those in opposition, come forward. Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries.
That was agenda item G. Now we're on to agenda item H.
Yes, ma'am. A public hearing will be held to consider application HL 17-01 filed by Gregg County Historical Foundation requesting a local historic landmark designation for a structure known as Gregg County Historical Museum slash Everett Building located at 214 North Fredonia Street. I do not believe the applicant is here. So we could go to staff comment if you'd like.
All right. That'll be great. Thank you.
Great. The Gregg County Historical Foundation is requesting a local historic landmark designation for the Gregg County Historical Museum, also known as the Everett Building. If this is approved, this will be Longview's fifth local landmark designation within the city. The building is located at 214 North Fredonia Street, which stands in an area of downtown which almost all 19th and early 20th century buildings have been razed or altered. This building was built in 1910 and is one of the only examples of 20th century classic revival commercial architecture. Uh, this building was built in nineteen-ten and is one of the only examples of twentieth-century classic revival commercial architecture, uh, within our community. Uh, the Everett Building is a two-story building with a raised basement. The building does face the southwest corner of the property with rounded bay and recessed, uh, main entrance on the first level uh, with four freestanding pink granite columns and two pink granite columns, uh, square columns that flank the entrance to support the second-story bay above. Uh, the majority of the exterior, uh, features in this building are original, including the primary entrance, uh, the iconic capitals and plasters, and the pink granite, uh, composite columns. Uh, alterations to this building have been fairly minimal. The original commercial front of Fredonia has been replaced. An early photograph show an elaborate raised panel above the cornice. Um, if you can see it kind of on this picture right here, you see it at, um, at the main entrance and on, over, uh, by the commercial front. Um, other than that, uh, there haven't, there hasn't been many, um, alterations to this building. Um, originally, this, uh, this, uh, property was Citizens and National Bank. Um, over the years, it's been several other types of businesses, there's been, on the second floor, there's been pharmacists, uh, attorneys, um, it's been banks a couple of times. Between nineteen-sixty and nineteen-seventy, the structure remained virtually empty, except for some temporary events. Um, and then in night, Anne Crane Lacy purchased the building, purchased the Everett Building and donated to the Gregg County Historical Foundation, and she founded that foundation in nineteen-seventy-nine. Uh, the Gregg County Historical Foundation was chartered by the state of Texas in nineteen-sixty-six, but hoped to have a permanent place for their collection. Uh, the Everett Building is listed on the National Register of Historic Places in nineteen-seventy-nine and is a recorded Texas Historic Landmark, um, in nineteen-eighty-three. Uh, local land, historic landmarks must meet one of the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance. Um, the Gregg County Historical Museum slash Everett Building does meet all of these criteria, and due to its historic, economic, architectural, and cultural significance, staff does find that this structure, um, should be designated as a local historic landmark. Uh, the Historic Preservation Commission, along with staff, does recommend approval of this request, so I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions?
Why is it necessary? It's got every credential.
Huh?
It's got all of those other credentials.
It does have all those other credentials, but local landmarks offer incentives, um, where the state, um, designation, as well as the National Register designation, does not. Um, if you are a locally designated, uh, structure or locally designated property within Longview, you are, we waive your permit fees. Um, so, they're doing a north wall project, actually, um, it should be this summer, and so their building permit fees will be waived, as long as they're a locally designated landmark. Yes.
But there's also, you can't imagine why this wasn't already. Well, I mean, that's the point. I mean, it's the one, one, uh, part of our town that not one in this room can't smile when we see the picture and say, that's Longview.
It's very handsome.
And you go, why are we just now in two thousand and eighteen in January making this connection?
That's how they're trying to measure.
I understand, and just, I mean, we, we, if you'd have looked at it, yeah, I thought, well, he would think you would have already been there, uh, we all know that answer.
Thank you, Angela, for that historical overview. Uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak, speak in support or opposition of this agenda item? Hearing none? I'll entertain a motion. A move to approve. I could see it coming right out of you. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. All right, that's the end of our agendas, uh, and, uh, staff, do you have an update for us?
Uh, yes, ma'am, all items were passed by city council.
Okay, are there any citizen comments, further citizen comments? If not, this meeting is adjourned.